Let's call the order this. Tuesday, March second. Planning Commission meeting. Let's see. Dennis, would you mind ladies in the pledge?
I have no problem at all, please.
If everybody could please mute their themselves, so we don't overtalk each other.
Hands over our hearts, please, and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Can we have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson.
President.
Commissioner Carranza.
Here.
Commissioner McIntyre.
Here.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Keen.
Here.
Chairperson Van den Ickhoff.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, Tori, can I get a second?
Second.
Jason, okay. That can we get a roll call?
Yes, Vice Chairperson Keen.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
And Chairperson Van den Ickhoff.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Then I'll move into public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda over which the commission has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Please state your name for the record before making a presentation. The commission may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Is there anybody from the public on the line that would like to make comment? John, are you monitoring that?
Yes. Doesn't look like anybody has their hands raised. If anyone's online and would like to speak, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, please press star nine. But at the moment, there is nobody that wants to speak.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and move to our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city staff and will be approved by one motion if no member of the commission or public wishes to comment or ask questions. Anybody from the commission that would like to pull this item or or I could get a motion and a second on that? Disapproval?
Make a motion to approve the consent.
Okay, Dennis, any second?
I'll second.
Jennifer, thank you. Okay, Annette?
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Keen.
Yes.
Chairperson Van den Ickhoff.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Great. So we'll go ahead and move to the planning commission business. We already talked about Ryan leaving us, but is there anything else that we need to discuss here? No? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move to community development staff reports.
Thank you. Sean, would you, oh, can I share my screen?
We also need to ask for expert.
Maybe we should ask for, yeah, expertise first. So why don't we start with Jennifer, having the expertise on this?
No.
Item. Tori?
I do not.
John, Jason? Dennis?
No expertise.
Okay. And Victoria?
Nope.
And I have no as well. So we'll go ahead and hear the one to the public hearing and preach of the following items. Public will be given an opportunity to speak after staff report, the chair will open the public hearing and invite the applicant or the applicants represented to make some comments. Members of the public will be invited to provide testimony to the commission following that. Speakers should state their name for the record and can address the commission for three minutes. After all public comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will discuss the item and take appropriate actions. Okay, Ryan, we'll turn the time over to you for this item.
Great, thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, so this is a conditional use permit for a wireless telecommunications facility amendment at twenty-one twenty-five Serena Court. So here we can see the zoning map. The property in red is about thirty-one acres in the residential rural zoning district. It's surrounded by single-family residential as well as public and open space and then a little bit of recreation at the bottom there. So here's an aerial view of the site. The site does belong to a Tascadero Mutual Water Company, so you can see their water tower there. And then the yellow circle is the location of a proposed enclosure that would have a new diesel generator that would include a fuel tank as well, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. So a little bit of background about the site. The original telecommunications facilities were approved in October of two thousand and two, and then in two thousand and six, the planning commission approved an amendment to add additional antennas as well as a second equipment shelter up there. So now singular wireless PCS is coming in and proposing to add a new diesel generator, which would include a fuel tank as well as an enclosure that would be located on a concrete pad. And the proposed generator is part of an initiative that's dedicated to providing additional emergency backup power to first responders in the event of a disaster or power outage. So the total runtime for the generator is only seventy-two hours unless there is an extended emergency. Otherwise, the generator is only going to be run during routine maintenance, and this would only be happening during normal working hours. So here's another view of a site plan, and then I'll just show an enlarged site plan so you can see just above the box in red, there's an existing enclosure that's being used by AT&amp;T. That's housing wireless communication equipment, so this one would be located just adjacent to it, and it's a little bit smaller there. The new enclosure does it does consist of a six-foot-tall concrete masonry unit block wall that would screen a majority of the equipment inside. But the new generator is actually eight feet tall with a new four-foot vent pipe that comes out of the top, which you can see here on the elevations. You can see it's just sticking out a little bit. These are the southern and northern elevations, and then I've included the east and west as well, which you can see it just extends it out a little bit. So the visual impact of the equipment and the whole shelter will really be minimal due to the location of the structure on the site. It's kind of located more in inward of the site, and the vegetation screens the equipment from most of the surrounding areas, definitely by the road. I drove around and sought, tried to see if I could see it, and I couldn't see the see the enclosure at all. So therefore, staff is not recommending increasing the wall height to completely screen the equipment. The wall would probably be a bigger visual impact than the equipment itself. So previous amendments did include conditions of approval that regulated the facility's colors as well as the landscaping. The applicant is proposing to paint the CMU block the same color that's out there right now, so it'll all match. And then prior to finalizing the building permit, the applicant is going to need to call for a landscape color and material inspection at which staff will confirm that these meet the conditions of approval, that the landscaping is consistent with what's been approved previously, and that the color and materials match what's out there currently. And here's that landscape plan, just for reference. This was submitted with the last amendment, and it looks like everything's consistent out there right now, but when we do our final inspection, we'll just double-check that it's the same as what's been provided. Here's some photos from the top of the site. It's a beautiful view looking out over a Tascadero, but the top picture here is looking toward Highway one oh one. You can see the existing facility, existing enclosure there on the right, and then the bottom picture is just a little bit of a better picture of it. And so if you imagine the new enclosure would be just to the right of that one right there, and it would be the same color and material. So I'm not going to go through all of the conditions of approval, but I just wanted to highlight this first one. This conditional use permit is for a new generator and enclosure, and all conditions of approval from the previous resolutions remain in effect unless they're specifically modified by this resolution. The proposed project has been determined to be consistent with the previous certified mitigated negative declarations. And so staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution approving amendments to the previous conditional use permits, allowing modification to the existing telecommunications facility at seventy-one twenty-five Serena Court, consistent with planning commission resolutions two thousand and two oh oh four five and two thousand and six oh oh one five, based on findings and subject to conditions of approval. The planning commission can approve modifications to the project or conditions of the project. The commission can determine that more information is needed and refer the item back to staff, or the commission may deny the project. And staff is available for questions.
Great, thank you. Any planning commissioners have any questions? For Maria, Dennis?
Yes, about the wall. Did the previous determination was was the purpose of the wall purely visual? Or was it also for sound attenuation at all?
Um, you know, I'm not sure about the sound. I know it was for visuals, but I am not entirely sure. I know I asked the applicant what the sound impacts would be, and he had mentioned that it's pretty comparable to or it's actually a little bit less than a typical diesel generator, so it's it's not too loud.
Hmm, are there any? There are homes in the area up on the hill. Are there any kind of at the elevation of where the generator will be?
Um, looking out, I believe there's at least one that might be a little bit higher than it. I don't think there are any at the exact same elevation. I think there might be one above and then maybe a couple a little bit below.
And then lastly, the generator is sitting lower than the wall? Itself the or the antenna antennas above it, there's other cabinet features that are above it, but the the engine itself, that you know, what what is the profile of the engine? Is it three feet, four feet? Five feet, something less than six feet?
It's actually eight feet.
Yeah, the the generator is eight feet. To be honest, I'm not completely familiar with the you know, how, what exactly isn't a part of that generator? Maybe the applicant can expand on that.
If you can go back to that one image, Mariah, that had showed the little side view of the
The elevation?
Yeah, the image that had the there. It looks like there's a vent pipe and a little bit of the equipment sticking up above the wall, but I would think that the engine's below the wall because the main reason for these walls is protection and sound attenuation. Sometimes they're in place for fire protection, too. Looks like it's all in there, though. And remind me, too, I think these things only run in a power outage emergency. Isn't that right, Mariah?
Correct, yeah, it would just be to provide power to first responders or to provide service.
Looking at the east elevation, also looks like the there's a level-two acoustic enclosure around the generator already besides the wall. So that would it would be significantly less noisy than a regular generator.
Is there a reason why the applicant proposed a six-foot wall and not an eight-foot wall?
I think it's just to be consistent with what's out there right now, and staff was supportive of that because it it seems like an eight-foot wall would be even more of a visual impact.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Steph?
I have a question.
Dwight?
How close is the nearest house? I mean, not just for sound, but since since we are putting in a fuel tank there, I mean, it looks like it's a sub-base fuel tank, so it's below the generator, but if something were to happen and it was to explode, is this far enough from a house where there would be no damage? Is the wall going to keep that in? I'm not familiar enough with structural integrity to know that.
Can you bring that?
Yeah.
That one, yeah, or pretty far. Well, I guess those houses along Mercedes and the one along Serena is there, but it's pretty far away. I don't think that's
Yeah, now seeing it like with the picture and then this, it's pretty darn tiny, so it looks like it's pretty far. Hmm, okay.
And diesel is not explosive.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. I learned something new.
There you go.
Okay, I have a question, Mariah. Are there any other generators on this site?
Um, not that I'm aware of. Maybe the applicant can expand on that, but I think it's just equipment, just typical equipment for the the cell towers out there.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
One of the panelists is answering questions in the chat, just in case you guys were wondering.
Look at the chat.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
They'll have an opportunity to speak after the presentation.
Yeah. Well, are there any other questions for Steph? Then let's go ahead and
I just want to make a comment. You know, staff did a really nice job on this. It was really well put together. Thank you. It's easy to read. Thank you.
Why don't we go ahead and open it for public comment and invite the applicant to make a presentation or stop this at the same. John, can you bring on Dave Elliott?
Yes. Give me one minute. For some reason.
I just press, I think I just let him in.
Okay.
This is always the hard part, getting the applicants on. Can't wait till we're back in person, and we don't have to do this tricky thing.
Can you guys hear me? Am I, am I, am I live?
Here, yes.
Okay, hi, nice to meet you guys. So I'm here to take any question, any more questions. I mean, as you as you had stated before, the presentation was excellent. Thank you for that. Staff. The generator is a level-two suppression, so there is a cabinet around there that keeps the sound down in addition to the CMU wall. As far as I know, there is no other generators that are on that site and and which is why we're proposing a thirty kilowatt generator to support AT&amp;T's tech.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Doesn't look like it. Thank you. Thank you, David. We'll go ahead and open up for any other public comment. John, do we have anybody else on the line?
Does not look like anybody else is raising their hand. Just a reminder for anyone calling in, if you just raise your hand, if you want to speak, we will let you speak.
Okay, well, then seeing then, I'll bring it back to the commission. Any discussion between the commissioners on this particular item?
I had Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to mention something that Dennis brought up around whether or not to increase the wall height to at least cover the eight foot of the generator. And so that seems like what potentially could be an alternative is to increase the wall by two feet. Is that right, Commissioner Elliott?
The 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 wall was was decided. That height was decided based on what was existing, so we just wanted to make sure that it matched. If we extended the wall higher, it would it would stand out. So that was our rationale behind the height of the wall. There is a little bit of that 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 you, as you can see from from the drawings, that that goes above that, the the vent is twelve feet from grade, and so that's that's the only thing that's going to be really noticeable from from the other side of the existing shelter.
Right, yeah, I guess I was just mainly thinking the only concern I could think of would be around the noise impact, and I don't think, from my opinion, that the antenna needs to be covered up at all with that four feet, but just that extra two feet, and whether or not that would make any substantial impact if you increase the CMU wall, you know, with the cinder blocks, so. And you decided that it wouldn't really add to decreasing the noise pollution and the generator turns on for emergencies?
Correct. The in addition to the CMU wall that's that covers the majority of it, the sound is is more towards, well, from my understanding of how they designed this, the 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 generator's main noise is going to be coming from the the center lower half of of the of the generator. So that's my understanding. I'm not the engineer for that, that you know, I'm not the generator engineer. But that's 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 what that's what I understand on this this particular model.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure, Elliot.
Yeah, you know, I actually designed these kind of collusions, and they are quite quiet. In fact, the distance from these houses, they probably won't even notice it's running when it is. Any other comments from? Okay. If there's no additional comments, we, anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'm making motion to accept the staff's current approval.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we got a first from Jason and a second from Victoria. Annette, can we get a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt. Commissioner Schmidt.
I think you need to unmute there. Dennis?
Sorry, yes.
Okay. Vice Chairperson Keen.
Yes.
And Chairperson Van den Ickhoff.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Good luck with your project, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Now it's time for any commissioner comments or reports? We don't have any.
I have one.
Victoria?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with Phil, actually, and see from our last meeting, February sixteenth, we were presented with some of the latest greenhouse gas emissions reports. And so I know that we, as a Tascadero, achieved our goals for AB thirty-two with our cap that we created in two thousand and fourteen, but it's up for renewal this year, and I was wondering, I got to attend the strategic planning meeting for the beginning on Friday, but I didn't get to attend the whole thing, and I wondered whether or not the City Council Incorporated updating the the climate action plan in their new strategic plans or not.
They didn't get down to that level of detail, but here's what's going to happen. They gave us a set of broad categories, right, for our community? Now, the department head team, we will in three weeks do our own strategic planning and come up with a list of very defined, much more refined goals and actions, which we'll bring back to the council again, which may include topics like that. But right now, it's looking like there's so much on our plate based on what we have going on in terms of large development projects and policies that are coming out of the housing element and our general plan coming up, that is going to be challenging, is probably going to take second to the general plan in itself. And a policy development that we do in the general plan will cause us to do more work on the climate action plan, but it's probably going to follow that. So I would say it's closer to being in in a two-year timeframe than it will be happening this year. But it will happen, and will be prioritized. And when we do our strategic planning with our department head team, we'll see if that floats to the top based on all the priorities. There's so much, it's incredible right now.
Yeah, the top two things that I already knows on your workload is the affordable housing and the general plan update. So I was like, okay, didn't know how that would incorporate, because I know Commissioner Betts, when we had him last two weeks ago, talked about the sustainable planning incentives that we could form from an updated cap, and that was where I thought that would be really excellent to focus on.
He had some great wisdom on that as well, too. It was really good, because that is where a lot of our funding can come from. It's where we can get a lot of grants. It's also where we can do a lot of good in our community. So, yeah, that was really good. We'll talk more about that as as those priorities unfold, as we go to that second phase of strategic planning, and we go through our actual goal setting at the department head level, and that's where we assign actions for each department. I'll get a whole list out of that, and and I'll share that with you in terms of what that that is.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to be interesting.
Bill, you want to give us a director's report?
Sure, it's perfect to lead into that. March eleventh is a big evening. You've probably got noticed about that already. It's a planning commission meeting along with the city council, and it's all about housing. This is the biggest piece that we are implementing from our housing element that we just did a few months ago of our general plan. The state mandates that we set aside so many units as affordable. It's called our regional housing needs allocation. Each city is allocated so many units that they have to make sure get established in their community. The only way we do that is by developing what we call an affordable housing ordinance, which makes developers, when they come in with a big housing project, either provide funds for affordable housing or actually build affordable units in their project. That's what this discussion is going to be about. It's going to be about how we can meet those affordable housing numbers. Do we do it through encouragement? Do we do it through requiring it and requiring fees? Do we do it through just putting in policies that encourage people to build housing that's affordable by design, in other words, smaller units? So that's going to be an interesting discussion. There's a lot of different perspectives out there on that. There's a lot of moving pieces to it. There's a lot of state law in that. It's a very, it's going to be a very charged discussion. This very first discussion is us outlining the issues, the topic areas, what the state wants us to do, what are our numbers, and what are our options for getting there? We've had a consultant that's been really helpful with our housing element. That's Genevieve. She's with MIG. She is going to help us with this hearing. She's going to present the topic areas and facts on affordable housing, and then we'll start this hopefully fruitful discussion as to how we should proceed with this inclusionary housing policy for our city. Some cities don't have inclusionary housing policy because it becomes such a tough political act. I mean, at the end of the day, we're in a desirable area to live. And so anything you do for affordable housing, you're artificially inducing it, really, because property values in the market really dictate what housing costs. But that aside, you still need to make ways to include, you know, all income categories in your community, because you've got to have housing nets affordable, whether it's by rent or for sale, for folks that support your service industry and all of the other aspects. Teachers, your firefighters, your police, they aren't the wealthiest in the world. So when we talk about affordable housing, that's what we're talking about is housing our workforce. We're typically not talking about you know, housing the homeless. That's a whole different category. We're really talking about housing our workforce, the people that we need here for our industry to support our jobs. But we need to talk about all levels, and that'll be the discussion on the eleventh, so that's a big one. The other thing, happy answer questions on that topic as well, by the way. Before I start that discussion, the other thing I wanted to mention, I did send out an email about some available training for free that the city will pay for for you through the League of California Cities. It looks like a pretty big time commitment to be online, but you can choose pieces of it if you wanted to enroll, or maybe you could share some enrollments in that. It's it's going to be virtual this year. Typically, those are done on-site where you go to a conference and you attend sessions, and you get to stay in Sacramento or somewhere really cool like that, but this year is virtual. I think I did hear from a couple of you already that you had a desire to be at least in part of that, so we'll get you signed up. But if anyone else is interested, or if you saw the email or didn't see it, let me know if you have questions about that. let me know if you have questions about that. It's a it's an opportunity. It's not a mandate. It's an opportunity. So just let me know on that. And as I mentioned before, a little earlier, talking to Victoria, definitely a lot of big projects that we'll see coming forward. Not only the housing stuff. We have big projects that are going to be coming through the development like the former Walmart property, the property across the freeway from that, it's called the Barrel Creek property, a big vacant property on Dove Creek. Um, and we have several hundred units of housing that will be moving forward through various levels of entitlement or construction over the next few months. So a lot going on, even though we're still in a pandemic mode and we're trying to help businesses out along those lines as well, but there's a lot of people building stuff right now, so. Kind of an interesting time, so we're busy. So I must apologize upfront if our staff, you know, if you've heard that we're not as responsible responsive as usual. We are trying to be, but we're a small team and we have a lot with a lot happening, so bear with us a little longer. Anyway, if you guys have questions for me, we can chat now as well.
Yeah, what is the uh near the post office, there's a pad being built for on that corner lot there. What is that?
It's a really attractive two-story office building. It's going to kind of have a little bit of colony style to it. It is being built specifically, though, to house the Department of Social Services. So it's being privately developed, but it's going to be leased to Department of Social Services. I thought maybe he just, he actually did freeze up. I thought maybe he was long contemplating right there with that look. He's like, oh. Sorry, Dennis, you're totally frozen. We're going to talk about.
Oh, Dennis.
Oh, great. I saw some good news today that the Galaxy Theaters is opening on Friday.
Yes.
Oh.
I um I want to uh really ask everyone in the community to support Galaxy Theaters. They're really in a rough patch right now, as is the property owner. I don't know if you if you, any of you have read the news on that recently. We did take a resolution through our city council last week regarding the property. The bank is trying to foreclose on that property, which we don't want that to happen. We want to support Galaxy Theater. And businesses like that have had a tough run in the past year, obviously, so. Got to keep that alive. I hope that they they continue on. I I, as soon as that's open, I'm going to be over there. No matter what movie's playing, I'm going to go check it out.
I was going to say, I have to go sit in a theater with a glass of wine and popcorn and butter to support my city? Oh, darn.
Yeah, exactly. How hard is that going to be?
That that's a real hardship.
Yeah.
Big ask.
I I wanted to say something. Did I see an email or something from the mayor about something happening on Friday at the Galaxy?
Uh, I didn't catch that. I don't know if I saw something from the mayor.
Other than the opening?
Yeah, I mean, they they've they've announced on social media that they're going to open, but I haven't seen anything from the mayor myself. Maybe 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 there there was something, but I haven't seen it.
Okay. It was on Facebook.
Yeah, I just saw on Facebook. It was just the announcement that she that it was opening.
Okay.
Nice, nice.
Well, is there any other? Any other discussion? Nice short meeting. And go get some dinner.
Yeah.
So we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting till the next regular held meeting. Do we have anything on the agenda for the sixteenth so far?
Uh, I think um.
We do. We have a amendment to a map on Santa Rosa Road. That's Mariah's project.
Thanks, thanks, and yeah, we have that. And I think, yeah, we have a couple little things in the next few weeks like that, but soon we'll be getting to the big stuff. Yeah, so we do have a meeting.
Great. Okay, well, then let's adjourn. We'll meet again in two weeks.
Awesome. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.
All right, thank you.